Be so easy.
I ask, all entertain a motion to come out?
So I'm moving on my line.
Mr. Bishop, Mr. Bishop's made a motion to come out of executive session second by Mr. Morrison. All in favor say aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries. Let the record reflect no action was taken during executive session. Ms. Oscar, you're next.
All right, and give me y'all the each sheet. Um, this is just general county alone, uh, to start looking at it. If you want to go to the very back page.
Oh.
I like that.
Second column, down at the bottom, it proceeds nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and five hundred and eighteen dollars.
One million.
That's what we're in the hole after revenues. Um, speaking of revenues.
Oh, we're in the hole?
Uh, yes, that's one parentheses random.
Oh, out here to the far right, okay. I got you.
Yeah.
Eight hundred and eighteen?
No, that's what, that's about the increase in your ad valorem. Your total increase this year.
Oh, down nine thirty-six and oh, I got you. Alright.
Um, but on the very bottom, the difference in what everybody's asking in the revenue we have is nine hundred and thirty-six thousand five eighteen short.
Got you.
Um, something that can fix a lot of this really quickly, there is a new H E's opinion out. We've been tossing this back and forth at some of our meetings about additional privilege tax that we get from the state. And what that is, um, it says we vehicles have a gross weight of buses, you know, certain one hundred and fifty pounds. And anyway, it's your, um, the money we get for a portion tags and big trucks. We get that money in and we give a portion to all the cities, school, Pearl School, county keeps some. This new opinion says that it can only be divided between the county and the county school.
Ooh, so why would we be trying to break the law then?
So what that means is that.
Well, why, why are they getting some on tags, the cities?
Well, that's been worth the que- it always has been. It comes.
History.
History.
I mean, I'm just wondering what, where does that fall in if they would do something back?
How much money are we talking?
We're talking about six hundred thousand.
Between all the cities?
Yes.
Wow. We're down to working on three hundred thousand now.
That's what would stay in the county coffers.
That's a no brainer.
How much of the increase is salaries? The seven fifty, how much is seven fifty?
It's gonna be around, without the additional part that anybody's asking for, it's gonna be around four hundred.
Like you.
Four hundred thousand.
I bet. Too much weight either.
It's usually, I thought it was five hundred.
No, like four, four fifty one.
We've had a lot of, it can run, it can run anywhere from three to four. We've had a lot of people that retire.
You know, I mean, like Ken left, that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Retirees come back that aren't making as much and then new boys that take their spot at a lower salary. So it can, it can fluctuate.
Okay, alright.
You're talking about doing this FY, aren't you? You could take the money out of the city's coffers that you.
You got to.
Oh, yes, sir.
But this is money they hadn't gotten yet.
Well, I mean, they're budgeting it already. They're doing their budgets too. They're factoring in that payment they got last year too.
Well, now, the attorney general says we do not do that?
Correct.
Correct.
Or it doesn't say we.
No, it doesn't say you shall.
And no shall. Well, I'm glad it doesn't have a shall.
No.
At your discretion, you can choose not to, that's.
No, I thought shall was you had to. May was optional.
You may, that's right, may.
It says you shall not.
It says.
It shall not.
That is helpful.
This is at the very end of it. Consequently, the privilege check proceeds pursuant to section twenty-seven nineteen eleven must be distributed only to the county and county schools.
Why don't we send a, a copy of that same letter to the attorney general?
We're gonna send it. We better send it tomorrow.
That's what I mean. I'm saying you need to, it means you move it.
Well, we might as well.
I agree. I'm just saying, they're starting their process right now. I got no problem with it, but they're getting ready to do their budgets too, so they need to be aware they get, they get short.
Well, let's say that the six hundred thousand was not there, Laura. Where would you go about getting the money from?
Well, I started with Ken. Um, I don't know. If it wasn't there, it was.
Do we need to ask him to leave?
Not, not with his salary. He has.
That's kinda the way it sounded when it came.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, I don't know, Jay. Pulling everything, pulling all the stops out, everything that I can. What we have had this year is even though our ad valorem, we've had about a three percent increase or a little bit over. We've had some other, um, revenues that are taking, uh, pretty big, uh, those guys this year. Typically, in the last ten years, we get about two hundred and fifty thousand a year off of gas severance. We won't get, we didn't make what I budgeted this year and after December, we're not getting another dime. We had two gas wells. They've both been capped.
Wow.
End of it. So we've lost that money that we've gotten all the years. Um, we've just had a lot of other revenues. Our oil timber severance is way down. Um, I talked to Randy Gray the other day and he said he was looking into it to find out. Our, um, money that we get for housing prisoners, it seems to be mostly on the juvenile side. It's down significantly.
I thought that was pretty bumping up there for a while.
It was.
It was for a while and now it's really.
They're probably just keeping their kids at home.
That's a good thing, really.
Well.
Well, no, because we were getting from other counties like Lauderdale.
Good thing is we got a little more control on some juveniles.
There, there's been some programs out there to try to keep them out of the system and all. Anyway, we've just had several things like that that are, um.
Yeah, I think we were getting three hundred thousand before. We had gotten three hundred thousand one year.
You're right.
But it, it's down. He came to talk to me about that a few weeks ago and said he was looking into it, see what they can do, talk to any of them, see, you know, if there's anything that, you know, is gonna help us there. Um, the sheriff did also mention to me, I put a little bit back in there, I only put eighty thousand in, but you know, we had quit getting jail phone commission. Well, they, if you wanna say repeal that law, that we can get jail phone commission now and he's gonna go back and see and revamp that contract. But by the time we get it done, I didn't know how much we actually get in for this year. So I put a very.
But did, have we added in employees, new employees for the detention facility?
I added in three new railers.
We, yeah, it's, yeah, that's in there. This will, we'll have some next year too. They can move three that's experienced and have three new for this year and then maybe some more next year. But so they won't be on, this ain't gonna be built by then.
Okay, alright, alright, okay.
But if y'all just, you know, you, you can look down and see, um, I, I've already done, I, I don't have the sheet for y'all today, but I've already gone back in and, and done some trimming myself to see how close we can get.
What about the tax sisters offices?
E O C.
Six.
Yes, sir.
But the increase there.
They have, well, they, some furniture for the side building that the, um, they use for training and the election commissioners used. Most of it was for a new building for vehicles.
Man, those vehicles, they sure need to make sure they don't get rained on or anything 'cause they're the nicest things the county, I mean, they're, they're outrageous.
Well, I would think that oughta go down since we just bought two. We oughta do.
No, that's for a building to put the vehicles in.
What vehicles? The ones they drive every day?
Those big tremendous vehicles.
Well, all the vehicles, I guess they have down there. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, by the way, it was a requirement.
What? You mean, everybody else in the county parts their vehicle like everybody else in the world?
Yeah, but everybody else isn't driving a seventy-five thousand dollar vehicle.
Oh, get outta here. Ain't no seventy-five thousand.
Well, it's close.
Nah.
Which one? The three-quarter ton diesel four-wheel drive?
That on county contract is another.
I don't know about county. Jared, go look at it.
I hope county contract, you'd be shocked.
Well, if you, yeah, what?
If I had to buy.
Yeah, me and you buy, yeah. Just know what, that just lets you know.
We just allow that federal mandate to continue on for a while.
You're right.
Wait a minute. You say a federal mandate. That means probably a vehicle we bought off federal funds.
Yep, yep, I bet, I bet that's.
Well, we don't have a one, I think. And that's a Dodge truck.
Sell it.
Those, last year we bought, just came out of our regular funds, right? Because they budgeted to buy them, so.
The part that gets me is the sheriff's department to go to Illinois and buy five used vehicles that have fifty or sixty thousand miles on them because they get a deal and come down here and patrol the roads day and night with them, but we have to have tremendous, uh, jumbo trucks that the E O C drives around that are outrageous.
Well, something to.
I mean, it's like their equipment is way better than everybody else in the county.
One thing, and I'm not saying all of them, one thing I would say they, there are times where they have to pull those, that, uh, if they have some trailers, they have to pull some kind of.
They, they have a boat, did they pull?
No, I mean, they, they have a.
They got the equipment trailer, one of the big old trailers you need to.
I thought they turned that to a R V. I thought they have a R V now.
I think they got a trailer that's got all the stuff in it.
That command center? I thought it was an R V now.
That one is, but they got some trailers that got equipment.
Those trailers with dive gear, stuff like that.
Okay.
It takes a three-quarter ton to, to handle it, yeah. I don't know how many they need.
What are we storing in that other, we got another shed that's built?
Going up on the hill?
Yeah.
I don't know what all is in there.
Well, I mean.
Think it's a boat in there.
I know they kept our equipment, you know, that, uh, that chemicals and all at one time.
Yeah, that's right. It breaks up.
But we have that building and then we got the other shed that's behind, over, that stores other equipment.
Well, that's part of you talking about what I, I took that out. I mean, things like that. The other thing is.
Oh, you did take that out?
Yeah.
So that's not in here?
Well, it's in this, but when, on my, when I'm trying to.
Okay, alright. So that's a hundred thousand out, so, alright.
Okay.
Okay.
She's anticipating some of the reactions that authority that gives.
Yes, I, I.
Yeah, I see. I played right into your hands.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
She put the bait out there and I took it.
She's good at that. She's good at that.
In Renee's department, she had asked for a vehicle box department, I went to, he had asked for a vehicle.
Another one? For Bob?
Well, I don't know for him, but in his department.
I mean, yeah.
Bob wants an employee though, is that what it is? Bob's new vehicle wants an employee? Hell, you know.
I took it out.
Okay.
And the reason why, anybody can come before y'all at any time during the year that has a need and say, this is what I need. It was not budgeted. Present a case to you and y'all, I can amend the budget.
We've always done that, yeah.
Balancing the budget does not mean that they cannot have something that they really truly need. So that's one way. Other than I'm still not back in balance, though. I mean, I pulled.
Right. That's only a hundred thousand.
Um, I T, a lot of that is, um, one thing they're said is our U P S for our system in here, that, you know, would be the big U P S battery backup that is basically at the end of its lifespan on its last link. And I said, well, we'll probably pull that out and if it decides to die, we'll just give authority to go get another. You know, but that's the kind of things we have to pull out to get back in budget. Um.
We, we've done this, always done that. I mean, they've put it in. Some of the things they've put in, we can always come back if the need's there.
That's what I'm saying. It, it doesn't mean that they cannot have the things that they need.
When it happens, we, we still get it.
If they can present a case to y'all for why they need something, then, then it can be done. So basically, unless y'all have any particular thing, um, that you want to know in here or whether.
I, I was curious, what about this county attorney one year behind?
Okay, you know, we had the, um, House Bill four eighty-four that for.
That was not mandated that we had the option to do it or not, yeah.
That's for Richard.
That is not me. That's not me.
You know, the judges got a raise, but, okay, they didn't get lashed. He's one year behind them and by law, he can make ninety-five percent of what they made.
Right.
And he's behind them.
But in his, in his defense, I remember if I'm not mistaken, wasn't it, we'd gotten, he was way behind it. I was gonna say way behind. It'd been several years for anything been chipped away and he came in, so I mean, if we'd given that a little bit, little bit, little bit, we wouldn't have. So now we have chipped it down to where, to hit this point.
No, I, I remember exactly how it all went down. The law passed and gave us the option to do it. Same deal with the, uh, district attorneys, uh, employees that we paid. Yeah, it was.
But he couldn't have gotten any more until they got, the judges got a raise because he can only make.
That's right, but we, nothing was done for several.
We held our ground and didn't give it for a while, but then buckled. Should I say y'all buckled?
We did.
Oh, I think we were there.
The other board buckled.
You were on that too.
There are also, this is the third year for raises going in for court reporters.
Oh, really?
It is also, it's six thousand a year. I have gotten requests from the judges to put that money in there, um, to bring them up to their final pay. The last year that they get an increase. It is up to the board, but the judges have requested, so that money's in there for the court reporters' increase. Um.
Politics gets involved in all this.
I have moved, you can see, um, I've moved at the very end, we had capital projects fund, we had seven hundred and fifty thousand in there. It would've been worse. I moved it out. We have a fund, it's fund three fifty. It's been there for years, many years. And we've done things out of it like, um, paid our portion of building the FEMA shelter and then we got reimbursed. It went back in there. We've done various projects out of it. It has five hundred and fifty-three thousand in it. If I move the money from there to general county, I have to reduce the village. I have to reduce our budget by that amount. So the best thing to do is leave it right where it is and use it just what is capital projects and use that money. We have some roofs that need to be repaired.
Yep.
Right now, we have, we're looking at ordering four new units. We've already placed two units for the jail this year. We've got, they, they're just going out.
With the heat?
He, he can speak to.
Wait a minute, what about our, our contract? We're about to go under.
These can't wait. We're talking, it's getting like ninety in the buildings.
Oh, they've quit altogether?
Yeah, like, and we put new compressor in to the ten and the thirty thousand that are popping just like that because, anyway, so we're looking at replacing four. We're trying to get quotes.
How much are we talking on those?
Let's put us over the, the fifty thousand. We're having to bid them.
Wow.
To get them in here. We just had a crane out there the other day to replace one. They've got one unit working on fifty percent. Well, actually, is working at fifty percent. There's two units, one's out, so the other ones have to pull for the.
Heck, are we gonna have any to address after we do this?
Well, that's a crazy thing. Uh, there will be some. I'm, you know, we've got this building and a few others, but we can't help those that's on the jail. I mean. So we've gotta get something.
I just hate, I mean, are we gonna get like a fifty percent back on all this, you know, or?
It's not fifty percent. You're, you're limited to a hundred thousand. You're thinking through the intergy grants.
Right.
Yep.
But we're, we won't even qualify on these. It has to be pre-approved in order to even do it. So we've gotta get these in here now. They don't.
I got you. Alright, we missed the boat on those one. Timing's terrible, so if we'd started a year ago, we'd be here.
Right. But, and you can't even tell when a unit's gonna go out either. Um.
That works a whole lot better replacing lines and stuff like that.
Laura, I don't even, I don't even see three fifty. Where's three fifty at?
It's not on here. It's a fund all by itself. This is just general county. It is a separate fund. Um, I moved the, the Blue Cross, you know, we upped our amount that the county was paying. I moved that into each department, so I've been able to cut down on, um.
Do we know how we're doing now?
Right now, it's doing pretty good. And that could be one of two reasons. Number one, we bumped our amount. It could also mean we're having a better year. Um, you never know.
Well, it's just unfortunate that every time we do our budget, we're off cycle and so January, we have to renew and that's when we gotta look at our, you know, what we have to do. So it'd be nice if we could get them aligned where we're doing it all at the same time.
It used to be April.
Oh, well, that's even worse.
Health insurance have managed to get it back to December. Um, but to your point, Jay.
Yes.
No, I've shaped a lot and I still have quite a bit to go.
Okay, wow. And we haven't even talked about, uh, we're gonna have, coming up online next year, our payment for the conference center that we're gonna have to pay. As the room goes solid.
We phrase that so right.
As the room goes solid.
We could just, uh, trade that money for the subsidy we'd have to pay to the ambulance service if we don't go with the convention center. Does that make sense? If we say, we're not gonna hold up the previous board's promise, then I have a sneaky suspicion that the people over in Flowood would, would say, well, we can go with our own ambulance service. And when that happens, we've gotta pay three hundred thousand dollars a year subsidy to the ambulance service we have.
Laura, you understand that something table coming?
No, it's not. It, I was told it would not happen.
No, no, she's talking about.
Oh, from, from this ambulance service. Well, then it would be six hundred thousand if Flowood was to get out.
Actually, probably more than that.
It'd probably be a million, yeah.
Cause we do that and.
I think we're, we're in a position that we don't have a lot of negotiating room on that. Um.
Well, Bob, the one good thing is, you know, this board didn't vote to take on that debt, you know, but this board has authority to revoke us paying that, you know? So whenever we do pay it, you can always say, I didn't have anything to do with that. But I, just so to help ease things a little bit, I think, uh, that we have a solution that we can deal with in terms of payment. We have, we've been paying on a, a debt for Pearl to two hundred, three hundred thousand a year and it's gonna be rolling off in twenty-one? This is only two fifty, so we're really actually looking at less than a million dollars over the term life of what we're gonna put out new money. After that, we're gonna net fifty thousand a year to the good.
Laura, the numbers on, I mean, this stings me a little bit. The numbers on the ambulance service are actually higher than they anticipated that they would be. Why would they be?
It's because of the, uh, uh, false runs. That's, I mean, he kept bringing that up, talking about how many, I said false, well, that's what they are. They go, but they don't pick up how many dry runs are basically, they kept saying. He kept bringing that up, throwing that out there and that's what he was trying to prepare you for. He's gonna come back and say, we got these, but this is how many, uh, we don't, you know, we don't transport anybody.
Twenty, twenty-four.
Because I was like, I first listened to it that way and then later I was told, but he kept bringing that part up.
Right.
We need to stay very close to the cities.
We could do the same for them, can't we?
We have a lot more.
Pay it, uh, just as we've been paying, just roll it over and continue on.
But yeah, because they could leave us. They had to have us and they had to have them.
You can't pay for it out of road.
Do what? Pay for what?
The, the debt he was talking about that comes off in twenty twenty-four is being paid out of the road because it was for a road. It was for the Children Road project.
Yeah.
So you can't pay a different debt out of road. You can't pay it, so that.
Well, there's gotta be, there's gotta be infrastructure put in out there. We could help, this could go toward that.
If it was, if there was an interlocal that stated it that way.
Yeah.
That it was toward a road.
Are you talking about your?
This is a little of a moot point. We're not discussing the conference center funding right now.
No, no, no. We need to, it's gonna be real money that needs to come out.
That's part of the budget though.
But is it gonna be in this budget year or next budget?
Eighteen.
Well, we're getting ready to vote on.
Yeah.
Where is it in, where do you have the two fifty in?
It's not. That's what I'm saying. I mean, we're going, we need to address it. Cause it, I think it's gonna hit, if not eighteen, for sure nineteen.
Twenty-year commitment, right?
Yes.
And how long is our ambulance contract for?
Annual.
Yeah. We'll find us another ambulance contract.
Yeah, good luck with that.
We, we had a lot of them running in here last time.
Well, man, it's kinda like, it's like Pandora's box. I don't give a shit what the past board did, you know, how do you service the rest of the county, see?
When the government starts lying to its people and signs contracts and promises, even though it wasn't us, and then we come back and say, I don't care what they said. You've raised, you've done your part. In fact, you've exceeded what you told us you'd do. We just changed our mind because we're the government and we can do that. When the government can do that, then there's no trust left in the government.
How many times has Craig Slick, I don't know, said one action from one board is not buying the, that's state law, right?
I don't, I know, I mean, I understand that we, because we're government, we can lie to people. We can tell them we'll do something.
I didn't vote for it. I don't like the idea. Would not have voted for it to begin with.
You didn't have the opportunity. You wouldn't, I didn't either. I'm not saying I would have or wouldn't have, but when we get to the point.
I say I wouldn't have.
We sign, when we sign, or this government signs something that says, we're gonna do it if you do this, this, and they do more than this, and then we step back and go, nah, we changed our mind. And, and then we're gonna look bad on them if they say, well, we're not gonna play ball with you.
It basically has a contract. There's.
We're not gonna play ball. They, they're gonna say, if, if, if you're gonna do us this way.
Okay, if you say we've got a contract, then let Mr. Slick tell me. I can't get out of the contract and I'd be wanting to have you vote for it, you know?
That's how businesses get bad names. That's when people switch from the county they live in and go to another county that they can trust.
Let them go.
Well.
If I, you know, if Craig says, I've got a contract, I've got a uphold to, sure, I'll pay it. But if he says, I cannot be bound because somebody else's decision, that's a whole different ballgame.
Well, like I said, you got, this board has a right to not, you know, fund the commitment the prior board made. But I was simply saying that there's a way of doing this without a big load being put on the county.
But she's not saying that debt doesn't roll off for eight more years, right? Seven more years?
Four. Yeah.
So what we're gonna do for the next six years is not two fifty?
It's gonna be about a million dollars output in what the county's going to have to pay.
So how much millage are we gonna raise?
We're not. I, I think we can take it out of road. Not only that, I think we should take money out of road and put it over general county because we're gonna have a lot of raises we're gonna have to pay for in the next few years.
I disagree, Jay. You jumping that road every time. I got, we got a lot of places we can put that out of road.
I'm not talking about just taking money out of road. I'm talking about shifting millage out of road.
But that's the same thing, taking money out of.
But it's taking money away from the cities too.
Yeah, you, you take, you go to that, but we got, we got infrastructure out there and that's where it comes from.
And who's to say that down the road that we won't have a balance in general county that we won't spend on the road?
You won't.
You know, I mean, cause we always spend money out of general county for everything, including all of our buildings that we're currently undertaking.
You always wanna go to, go to take that millage out of road? I, I don't, I'm not.
Well, one reason, Jared, is cause we got too much in there.
Because.
We're paying, we're paying more money per mile than the state does for their own maintenance.
If we, if we use it, you wanna use some?
Well, you, we can easily blow every bit of it. I'm not saying we can't.
They don't blowing it. No, I agree with you. We got some there. Yep. I got a right of way we need to get.
Well, we got needs that need to be addressed that I think we could obtain not only, not only with that.
That right of way would do more than that convention center would do. The south end.
I disagree. I mean, we're about to have a.
Cause you don't have a lot of infrastructure that's working.
A three-star hotel coming here and something to build, be a flagship for our county that we don't currently have.
And that generates what for us?
What's it gonna generate though?
Business.
Okay.
Business. It's gonna help keep businesses here and businesses come here.
Same thing, infrastructure does.
Currently, as in, whenever people get off that plane, they drive to Jackson or Madison.
I know, Jay. Infrastructure does the same thing. And fortunately, uh, Flowood has mass infrastructure that's, that's been great. So, I mean, that, that's right, but that's the reason these things, options are there to be caused of this infrastructure. And that's our, our responsibility, infrastructure, and that's where that money road comes in to build that infrastructure. I mean, same way with, with, uh, Andrew Chapel, same way with, uh, the roads, the things we're doing is our responsibility for infrastructure as well.
Well, let me tell you, the, the amount of money we can get in for millage is not enough to go out and build new roads. We got enough to be able to maintain what we have.
If you can identify tangible upside for the county to get involved in convention, I'm all for it. But meaning that Flowood is the one hundred percent benefactor from this project. I think it's a great project. I really do. I am all for the project. And I think the city of Flowood should pay for it. It's to their benefit, you know? We're talking about a population base of, what, ten thousand people?
You know, there was people felt the same way whenever we put money into the Bass Pro. You know, what is Bass Pro doing for Rankin County?
No.
Yeah, well, I think it's doing a lot. We get a lot of people through here. We got a quality of life here that we've never had before. You know, we, we got the whole development, every bit of, the Braves stadium.
The convention center is a nucleus for the businesses that's gonna come around, that's gonna come in here to support.
Which business, which businesses are gonna come around?
There's already a new, uh, restaurant that's looking at coming to the reservoir. That's a five-star restaurant just since this was announced. And I'm not gonna name the name of it because we're being recorded. That's already, I mean, you got a community bank saying they're gonna build a, a regional, uh, office there. That's jobs. If you've got children.
I ain't got, I ain't got to lay it out.
What is this gonna do for the county? I don't care if you live in Pocket or if you live in Florence or Pelehiachi, you send your kid to school and they make good grades. They go to college and they make good grades. They get out, they got a bachelor or master's degree and they wanna make fifty thousand dollars a year. We need some jobs here that pays fifty, sixty, eighty thousand dollars. What they do is they go to Nashville, Atlanta, Dallas, or Madison. Why don't we put them right, to work right here?
So what jobs, what kind of jobs you talking about this conference center can generate?
Did I just say that community banks will put their biggest office here? What about Ergon?
Well, community banks are committed to put their headquarters here anyway. I had nothing to do with. Community banks, well, community banks are committed to put their headquarters here anyway, I had nothing to do with the convention center.
No, 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 I was at the meeting when they said, you do this, we'll do that. No, they are committed, they're committed because they know it's coming.
Well, that, that's got to be.
And that's the thing that we've got to do, is we've gotta have more commercial jobs here that our kids and grandkids can make a living and raise a family.
I'm all for that, I am.
Well, you can't do that with just a chicken house, I mean, I like the rural area, I live in it, I got a farm.
I'm all for it, you know?
But my kids can't come behind me and make a living on my farm.
But you, you, you lay all this, this out, but you don't identify any of it.
I just did.
Well, I made it, you said that, you said that you got a restaurant, wants to go in because of it.
We haven't even started it, the plan's on him off the ground. And this is gonna be the biggest development in Flowood. Do you think that Dogwood didn't do anything to help this county?
Well, the county, if it wasn't for county, Dogwood wouldn't be where it is today, maybe, or maybe ten years later down the road before it got developed.
The four, just the four corners of Dogwood, just the four corners of Dogwood paid a million eight hundred thousand in county taxes at Balaorm last year.
How long did it take them to get to that point?
Hey, it don't matter, we're able to pave your roads. You can pave roads in Puckett because of that.
Yeah, but it does matter.
I'm all for the, for the convention center, I'm not taking money out.
I wanna keep rural, rural, agriculture, agriculture, and if they, if the cities can contain this and help us build schools and build roads, then we've gotta have it. We're, we're right here fighting over money, and you don't wanna bring in more money, something that would generate money.
I think we needed to leave it, move on passive, because I'm fixing to lose it here in front of the red recording.
I don't mind, we can lose it.
You've already lost it, you know, uh, let's move on, what else we need to move on to?
Well.
I mean, the, the topic's out there for discussion, and we will bring it back up at some point down the road, but I think it's appropriate, we gotta let it slide and, and move on to a different topic.
What's out for discussion?
Sir?
What, what's out for discussion?
Well, I've discussed, I said, we, we've kind of brought it all to the, to the forefront, and I think.
On what part?
The, the conference center.
Conference centers are done deal, the conference center is good for the county, it's good for everything. I, the only reason I got, is I don't think you take money out of road.
And where you gonna pay for it?
Yeah, I see, that's the only place we're gonna get it, Jared, raise taxes.
That's where you go to, you go to that road.
Okay, that's fine, but where's the money coming from? Somebody tell me where we're gonna get the two fifty from if you don't get it out of road. So, what's next? All right, let's ask this question, if it can't come out of road, where does, is there any other feasible scenario that you could take it from without getting involved?
I'm not saying, it may, it may come out of road, Bob, it probably will, but I'm not saying take millage out of road.
Try to allocate the two fifty to some road project over there so it qualifies, like where you come out there?
That's what I'm saying, just don't, we don't need to cut millage.
It has to be for infrastructure, like a road in order to be able to.
That should be easy enough, that's what Pearl School did when we gave them the three hundred thousand, you know, I mean, they dedicated it to a.
And that's great.
Yeah, I, I got the, I'm all for the conference center, but I have a hard time, City of Brandon being one. They're getting ready to invest thirty million dollars in, in, in things, in, in the amphitheater, and, and ball fields and stuff like that. Has the board done anything to help? We've been on five hundred thousand dollar bridge down there.
What about that project down here that, that's back behind, uh, down the Applebee's that we all bent over, bikers tried to help get there?
We're getting, we're getting Balaorm out of it, we're getting road and bridge.
We cut them some slack on that and helped that, too.
Boy, what, twenty-six thousand a year?
Whatever, I mean, we did.
I mean, that's true, and we do, and that's good, but I mean, we're not to the tune of two hundred and fifty.
And the five hundred?
Five hundred thousand for one bridge.
But that we don't even need to be involved in, because that's on the state eighty highway.
We actually haven't spent it yet.
I know.
We just committed.
But the way we did.
We should be getting an invoice shortly, and we will pay for the years up.
Okay, so it go on this budget year?
Under seventeen.
Come out in seventeen, yes.
Okay.
What else needs to be discussed, otherwise I'm gonna turn a motion for recess.
I'm sorry to get everybody in such a good mood, you know?
Yeah, this, this is.
That's all good, too, that's all part of it.
This is what it always is.
You know, that's all part of it, you know?
Well, I, Laura and I don't agree on this, the, the money coming out of road, because, you know, the three hundred thousand that we're currently spending was very flexible.
The what?
The, the three hundred thousand is coming out of road currently for, for the Bass Pro Children Road project. After we get through recording, I'll tell you the rest of it.
That's what my legal papers say.
Yeah, well.
Bass Pro, three hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay.
Per year, goes off in twenty-four.
And the reason why I was saying take the millage out, so to cut that whole deal out, and we do, really and truly, we are maxing ourselves out out of General County by doing, we, these two projects that we have going on right now, we're maxing out our debt, we don't have any more room, we're gonna be counting on growth, one hundred percent after that. And just right here, this year, with just the little bit of increase that we've had, we're already in the hole, eight hundred thousand dollars.
We're in a hole every year.
Not to this extreme, we've always had room to go and take away, but Laura's there telling you that she's taking everything she can take, and we're still five, six hundred thousand in the hole.
And we've always been that way, too. Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We needed to take extreme measures, and, and even then, I said, we should take the millage out of road. We, we could've took millage out of road and, and avoided some of that tax increase, you know, so.
We, we've been here before.
Yeah, exactly, so.
And it would be.
Not to beat that dead horse again.
It would've been better this year had we not had some other receipts, because our growth was decent for.
Well, we know we're not gonna get that severance back on the gas, that's gone.
That's gone.
And I, they've already got all their infrastructure in the county they're gonna get.
Let's just turn, let's just authorize the board to buy some mental interest out there in a prospective well and see if we can't generate that money back, you know, roll the dice a little bit.
And maybe by twenty twenty-four, you'd see something.
Hey, you, you say that joking, though, I do believe we need to look at buying a land to open our own dirt pit.
I do, too, yep.
I'm glad you agree, because not only that, we can get our own Class Two landfill.
Can we?
Give us a place to dispose of limbs and that type of stuff.
For dirt pit, can we not lease, I mean, can we not get some of the sixteen section, like?
I guess they can, they did it this year, I didn't even know it was legal to do, and.
Which, what, which, what, towards what?
Pete Altman went and is selling dirt off of sixteen section land right now to the East Metro project. And the school went in and sold it, I guess, or leased it. I didn't even know you could do that, because heck, you gotta go get approval from the Secretary of State just to be able to cut down trees.
Well, they're obviously paying per, per cubic yard to the school district.
I think they did a big lump sum.
Lump sum to do.
But I didn't even know that was an option, and that might be a revenue or an avenue we can take, you know, to get that.
I'm all favored, but, but I got a problem looking into it for sure.
Yeah, that's just gonna be a lot more money coming our expense coming our way, you know?
Yeah, well, I mean, we would be hit up tremendously, but there's so many things we could use it for as well, but I agree with what you're saying, uh, because everything's running out of dirt.
Yeah, it's a commodity, about like gas, so, anyway.
Well, since we're talking, since we're throwing it all out there today, let's thought, let's talk about the countywide drainage district. Jared's got one firm he'd like to use, and, and I got somebody else I prefer to use, you know, and it's.
You and I, I, I love Buster Parker and Emily Death.
Sure.
But they do not have, their niche is not going to Washington getting money. And whenever we do this, I think we need to go with the company that's gonna go and help us get funds. That's why I've tried to get us go Wagner the last year or so.
No, I'm not, I'm not on that wagon, you, you're doing a study, and you're doing it for political.
They're capable, Wagner Engineering is very capable, only two groups can do it. Wagner and, and Buster's group, can only two that I'm aware of, I've been told, they can do water studies, right? Is that true?
Oh, no, I'm sure Neil Schaefer and other big companies could do it, man.
I don't know, I, that's a specialty, there's a niche they get, and, uh.
Let me just tell you the bad news, the board wrecked, not looking good, spinal cord injury, one you don't recover from usually. That's Noah, his name is Noah Pate. P, uh, P A T.
Well, I mean, do we? I mean, right now Wagner already does Brandon, does Flowood, and he's talking to Pat Sullivan about doing something for Richland as far as the, the water studies, um.
Actually, so has Pat talked to, uh, uh, Mr. Parker, and them.
That's fine, I mean, but that's, it's more good.
Well, that, you look, you, Jared, you know I love Buster and the group, they do, that's a great job, but they don't have any interest or desire to start going to Washington and trying to seek funds.
Well, we've been, every time we've been, we've been raking in a lot of money, too, Jay, and.
What?
We've had, I'm saying, we've been just raking money every time we've been to Washington, everybody else.
Yeah, right, right.
I mean, our lobbyists are just fucking it in.
Oh, and that was a, and I really didn't want to have a conversation up here, you know, but that was a, you know, that was not successful, uh.
That's.
Do you take that out of the budget?
Oh, God, yeah.
That's another one, but we don't wanna get into that today.
No.
Okay, but.
Y'all just gotta tell me what to do.
Would you just do this, would you look at what a quarter mill coming out would generate for us? And what impact that would have on the municipalities and our overall budget?
Two hundred and fifty thousand, then.
And that's, and that's, go ahead, remember, too, we're talking about municipalities, we're taking money out of the tag thing, too, so you're talking about hitting them twice.
We've talked about this mill thing year after year, whatever it is.
Some of them are small that, what comes out, but some of them.
But you can't, little towns like, let's say, Puckett, Florence, Richland, the little, you can't just.
Who gets the biggest cut, Pearl? Richland, really?
Really?
Biggest cut of what?
Wow, okay, go ahead and do it, then.
Biggest cut of Richland?
Why do they get the biggest?
Really? All that industry down there?
Trucks down there?
Wow.
Wow.
All those truck companies.
Well, Pat's always, you know, bragging about how well the low debt they have, and, you know, and the, and the strong mentality, they can suck up this short, fall, can't it, Pat?
Oh, man.
Since we broached that, how do y'all want it? Cabo's Point, not dividing them as soon as possible, I think.
Is that Attorney General's letter?
A letter.
Do you want a letter to go out with the AG's opinion?
Yep.
Wouldn't that be the best?
Yes, yeah.
It needs to go out ASAP, I mean, like tomorrow, you could get it out.
Just y'all steel yourself.
Okay, well, that's six hundred thousand, we still short two hundred. Now, where, where does that put us at on your list, Laura? Not what we're looking at, but what you've come up with, the cuts you've made, which include the O C and those other things.
Yeah, I still have a little bit to go, um. Yeah, I can do it.
Okay.
People won't be happy with me, but I can do it.
All right, well, let's just, y'all, let's just be honest and say, if we didn't have the six hundred thousand.
I've been honest all day.
Well, I mean, we just need to be realistic.
Oh.
And, and, and looking toward the future, that six hundred thousand, we weren't gonna make up.
Yeah, we didn't have that.
Didn't we move this year, uh, part of the fees or, or insurance into road to take care of road employees?
A little bit, yes, well, it's always been, um, their portion that the county pays has always been in there, but it got up this year, but it didn't move, it wasn't, no, it didn't put all in general.
Okay, I thought that we were moving a big chunk out even this year.
I, I do think that some merit of discussion, it's not happening today, obviously, but the next one, next budget meeting, what we set for the, the, those departments that are looking for additional employees, and I'm speaking specifically to community development. You know, we have kicked that can down the road as far as having a building inspector down there.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
We really need to step up, and I think John Muller's talking about maybe retiring next summer anyway, and that would be a natural progression.
But it'll do it work out for him.
Which, which does bring me to the point on the third hour next board meeting.
Very good.
Um, that afternoon, can we meet, can we recess for lunch and then come back and have a few of the departments in here?
Well, I'm hoping I won't be here at third, but probably will be.
Works for me if it, if it expedite the process.
Are, are there any particular departments right off the bat that y'all would like to talk to, building?
Building one, I guess Bob, because Bob thinks, he's under some illusion, something's gonna happen in his department, uh.
Whoever's asking for an increase, let them justify their increase, that's outside normal things, you know?
Okay.
And then we just, you know, you need to be prepared to answer your questions for the money, all the money you want.
What did John do about Pat?
He is staying on, he took a demotion down, he's no longer chief mapper, he's still on the payroll, because the mayor job in Richland is a part-time job.
Oh, it is?
Classified as part-time.
It's part-time.
He's currently working down there in the taxes collector's office, but my understanding, he's coming by to this office up here, and will spend several days a week up here.
So is John gonna have to hire somebody to replace him?
Well, he's already, he's already promoted Michael, what's Michael?
Rees.
We, uh, it's the chief mapper, so it's not gonna be another employee over there to replace.
He's just moving salaries around.
He's just moving people around, making work.
Okay, all right, okay, so we're not getting any money out of it, where he's just not making any more?
That is correct, it's my understanding that, that for those hours or days that he works as the mayor, he will use annual time that he has on books to keep his check home.
I got you, okay, all right, whatever he said currently, I got you.
Who else besides community development, we won't buy Westworth up here?
Oh, yeah, definitely, I, I, you know, I missed last year's, or else I would ask them about them two trucks they bought, but, yeah, I, uh.
Does he get some money from something through the V O C, the?
We did get reimbursed, some, we get about ninety-two thousand a year from M P G, E M P G.
Does some of that go to, is that where they may buy some of?
That's basically reimbursement, we, he turns in each month salaries, utilities, and that's basically a reimbursement that we get. I don't think they've had any particular grants out there.
For vehicles or equipment, that type of equipment.
There's been a, there's been a one, I know, because we voted on it, you know, that came up just out of sudden, one of them Dodge trucks, yeah.
I thought, I thought it was something that.
Yeah, there was a Dodge truck.
Money somewhere to buy.
It came available, well, I voted against it because we didn't really need it, we were just buying it because we're getting a great deal, you know? Uh, but now it seems like we gotta build another shed for it. Yeah, yeah, lean to.
Sir?
Lean to.
Yeah.
Lean to, lean to.
Yeah.
What kind of money is somebody in there for a building?
You can get us one of the portable garages, you know, you say out there, what, I'm sure Butch.
Oh, yeah, Flow, uh, Brandon would love that.
Really?
Yeah, and paint it pink while we had it.
All right, who else besides Bob and, uh, Renee do we need here?
I had looked.
Nobody else has got big numbers?
In that line item, he's got eighty-six thousand dollars in that particular line.
Wow, well, this budget here is gonna be shortest of all time then, huh?
I see who else would need to. You want I T?
Sure.
And hear from your new.
Yeah, I wanna hear how he's spitting in.
I saw him over at the jailhouse the other day, and I almost didn't, I didn't recognize him at first, and I go, what?
Who is this guy? Yeah.
I did, I said, man, he looks familiar.
He has a lot to take on, which I'm really surprised he's not coming with some recommendations of some software and hardware and all to buy. I really thought he was wanting to go back Cisco on all of our switches.
I think he's, I think he's taking it slow and just really, you know, getting a feel for everything here and getting up to speed and.
Has he met with Jared yet?
I don't know that.
Would you encourage him to do that?
I would've thought he would have by now.
I will.
I gave him his phone number a couple weeks ago.
He might have, I don't, I'm not sure if he has or has not, um.
I mean, we got money on the books, right, for them that we haven't spent?
Correct.
Okay.
We do, um, anything in elections y'all want to?
What could they possibly want, we bought everything for them, did we?
Well, they need some, um.
I saw that.
What number are they?
There's some, they're one eighty. They need some kind of a box that goes inside what we all call the big garbage can to collect the ballots, um, several other things, I met with Tanya and Leslie the other day, um.
I, whenever we discussed this last.
Twenty-seven percent increase?
Didn't we, uh, didn't we tell, our recommendation was to get with our vendor and ask them how other places do this? Have we got that answered?
I don't know that we've gotten that answer yet.
I mean, I respect our legislative commissioners, but I've, I've learned from this process, we need to do our own homework.
They, um, they understood that this probably would get cut, cut down somewhat.
Well, most time they put it in, the people put it in higher and they know it's gonna get cut.
I have a question for you, uh, Laura. Why couldn't some of that, like that multipurpose money, the hundred eighty eight for some of it, that looks like some capital improvements?
It is, and I plan on taking some of that out and as we get to it and can do it, that they ask the request and get two quotes and we know more about the money then and they come before you and we make a bunch of amendments.
What about this, what about this, uh, bid that we're getting ready to do on all of this energy money? How much are you thinking we're gonna spend on all that? The lights, air conditioner?
Haven't got it in yet.
I don't have a clue.
Well, I know the livestock was one of the driving forces at the beginning of all this. So any chain of LEDs.
But we had, we hadn't, we hadn't got the estimate back on it yet.
Right, until we.
Well, we did. We got a couple of them.
We, we did. I don't remember what they were.
No, you totally aren't.
But we sort of put that to the side until.
Right. I mean, we just kinda.
They come in here and do everything.
Yeah.
Put an overhaul on it.
I think though, whenever we, our next, we're selecting the, the vendor to go with to put all this together. But we're gonna need to give them an idea of what it is we wanna look at, aren't we?
Well, right. And then we're gonna look at the lights, at the livestock, any remaining air conditioning units, the lights in here.
This building.
And when all of this is done and it's done up front and we get the quotes and all, then in that year, we can be eligible for a hundred thousand dollars from.
Yeah. Okay.
So that will help offset.
All right.
Quite a bit. So, um, I see if there's anybody else that y'all.
How much? You still don't know, we're not.
And Region Eight's not asking for anymore. They will come before you in August. They always do. They have to come once a year to make the presentation. So they'll be here.
Where does the medical come from, our budget?
The Blue Cross down here?
Yeah, our budget.
Just comes out of just a line item that I have, just a.
It comes out of general county.
Based upon where you've been the first six months, or you'll know here shortly, I guess, the seven months, how the expenses have been going. Are we gonna be a?
Well, we pulled some out in the beginning of the year, but it's, it's capped off. You can see, we had three hundred thousand and, uh, we've only, we haven't pulled all of that out. And that's why I've been able to reduce it. And I checked this morning, it kept about half million in that account. Now, we'll have draws come out of that.
Sure.
But that could be a combination of a good year, but it has helped that we don't have to keep pulling up these wads of money. Um, that's why I reduced that. And Mike, just go ahead and take that other hundred thousand out and then we have it and I have to move some money and this has to be done.
And we had talked last time back in November about raising the deduction from one hundred thousand to fifteen hundred.
We talked about it. We did not do it.
We, we raised the deduction on the medical prescription and that was a good help for us, I guess.
Yes, we did. You do that the one time deductible. After that, you don't hit it anymore, but it was not on generics. So maybe a lot of people chose to go on.
We sent out, we sent out a notice, I think it's planned, uh, letting them know about the generics bill.
We did.
Didn't we alert them yet?
Yeah, we told them volume was going up, but there was no increase in generics and anything.
Right. I didn't catch you feedback.
Actually, this is way too long. This county stops up here.
So, the reason why I went in. Guessing that's your house? They might have your house on there.
And so that's just one example.
I mean, and all being said, you can kind of, you might not do better anywhere.
It doesn't help us any and it's not that we're about going into that, but I think, uh, Janice and I were talking today, something that she had heard and that they've been talking about in light of all the Obamacare. I mean, that's gonna end up.
Wow.
It's just gonna happen. Let's reinforce the social life medicine. It's, it's just gonna happen.
All right, besides, hey, Jay.
Yeah, man.
Steve, we're going I T. We're doing community development. We're doing Bob Wesworth. Who else? I've asked plenty, don't you all?
I think that would be plenty that afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
On the, after the seventh meeting, that afternoon, we could bring in anybody else and do the different funds, like you have Mike in here.
That's just your house. That's not your problem.
We'll be signing a license. I don't think so. I don't want to bet here.
You know, this is, uh.
Anything else need to discuss?
I'm sure.
John, anything else for discussion? Steve, Jay, I'm good.
I've, I've said enough.
Both, both are Mr. Morrison. It's our second. I'll second. All in favor, say ah. Ah. All opposed, like sign. We'll see y'all on the third.